Bring us up.
Who?
Chantel.
Oh, not you.
We was waiting to see who you'd call.
We'd made eye contact.
Okay.
All right, Bennett County Commissioners are back in session on budget hearings. And with us today, we have D six and friends. And so if you guys will just introduce yourselves, then the floor will be yours, Ashley.
I'm Ashley Rinkerson, the Director of D six Street.
Jason DiChiaro, Court Administrator.
Judge Gabbiola, District Judge here in the sixth district.
Thanks for joining us today, Judge.
Appreciate it. Thank you for having me.
Okay, go ahead.
And I'm actually gonna, Jason's gonna take the lead.
Okay.
All right, so we have the District six court budget. And the first line item we want to talk about is the position control number one zero four six zero one. The treatment counselor position. And we're requesting a grade increase of that to grade twelve, step three. And this is because this has been misclassified before this person or...
So this physician has been paid as a different, as a case manager? And...
No, this one was just a lower, it was just for whatever reason, it was a lower grade than matching everybody else.
So we just need to bring her up to where the other treatment counselors are?
Within that grade and her step.
Yes.
I guess the first thing, and that's just to bring her up to where she's qualified as a treatment counselor and to be paid the same as all the other treatment counselors. I did miss the first recommendation, which is a three percent COLA and step increases for the employees. The next physician is a position of control number one five one zero zero one. And this is the case management manager position. The person that's currently in this position is a treatment, received, finished school and received her degree and would qualify as a treatment counselor. However, this position is a little bit complicated because we'd like this position to be a treatment counselor position. And then if we decide to hire somebody that's a case manager, that we could pay him at the lower rate, but to be funded at a treatment counselor. However, the person that's in this position, if you look down to professional services, that person is moving to Indiana for two years. And our request is for them to be a contract employee for those two years. In the request, their current, their current salary would be fifty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-three. And we're recommending a twenty to thirty percent increase to cover the employee rates of being a contract employee. And we understand from Matt and Christie that that's a common practice where we wouldn't have insurance or the matching taxes for that position. And it would actually save a position. And then our goal is for her, that person to return back in two years and it be a full-time position.
We've discussed this quite a bit. Her husband's going to be in a program for two years, but they're from here, intend to return here. And she's a very good employee. And so we talked about a lot of different options of how things might work. And in the end, paying her as a remote employee wasn't on the table, really. But as a contractor, this is something that I'm in support of. She's great. She already knows it's gonna be...
Do we want to go into executive? We can talk a little bit more detail.
I don't know, I don't know that we need any more detail about it. It's, it really is just a, it's not going to cost us anything. She'll be a paid contractor.
The work is measurable.
Yeah, and the work is measurable.
Well, well, to me, we'll have to see a contract.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm not guaranteeing anything without looking at a contract.
Yeah.
So, saying, plain simple.
Yeah.
So what is the work that they're doing?
It would be treatment counseling and...
So you're just...
She's already a full-time employee. We just are asking, we want to move to her to a contract position. So we've moved a line item to be able to pay her as a contract employee.
I get that. And just, is she a counselor? So she'll provide online counseling instead of face-to-face counseling?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
And then a next line item that is a major change or request is the copy lease. And we originally had five thousand dollars, but we've done some research. We haven't settled on a vendor yet, but we have, Ashley's gotten some bids from different vendors. And we're going to bring those to the commission. But it looks like we need to increase that a significant amount to between nine and ten thousand dollars. And so we're requesting to bump that up to ten.
And let me clarify that for the board real quick. The budget sheets you're looking at, it doesn't show money spent in twenty-three and twenty-four because this had been previously treated as a grant fund. So it was, it was Fund two eighty-two. We made this an enterprise fund in twenty-five. And so we moved it into a different department. So it doesn't look like there's any history. But if you look back at Department two eighty-two, you'll see all of the history. But we didn't want to make that adjustment because it's not true to the GL. So, quick clarity that if you're not seeing numbers or usage, that's why. Is it looks like it's a new fund and it's because number-wise it is. So when he's talking increasing budget, that's, you're not seeing that prior amount.
Two pages back.
Sorry.
Thanks for the clarification. And so the next line item that we have is miscellaneous expense. When D six started, they received a startup funds from one of our, of ninety thousand dollars for, from two of our trust funds. And this is a conditional based on revenue. We put it in last year's and we took it out because we didn't meet revenue. And same thing would be happening only here is if revenue showed that we could repay forty-five thousand this year and forty-five thousand next year, we would be able to do that. And then we could be able to use those funds for other needs within the district and within the county. And so that would be forty-five thousand only if it feels like we're meeting projections in revenue and that Christie approves that and Jason approves that redistribution of funds.
So where would that forty-five thousand dollars go?
It would go into the district, the...
The court, I believe.
Yeah, the, I think it...
It goes back to, it would go back to drug court funds.
It wasn't the drug court budget. I think it was, yeah, it was, it would go into that, one of the drug court trusts.
Yeah.
I think, and I can get you the specifics on it. But it would be housed within Bennett County.
But it's in-house here.
Yes.
Just going to a different fund.
So when D six started, Carrie Home...
Right.
Pulled some money out of the drug court fund and utilized those for startups so that we had some cash flow. And it would just get put right back.
And those are, and that's not, that's not, those are state funds that we've received and then redistributed.
And we'll just monitor through the budget process revenue and see how much that dollar amount can be. And then budget for it or not, but we wanted it included just for discussion purposes.
And then, and then the, as a, the next line item right under that is administrative costs. And as an enterprise fund, we have a five percent audit that we pay to the Audit Department to be able to provide services for that. And so that percentage, that number is an estimate. And then it would, depending on what the budget would be, it'd be five thousand, five percent of that. So any questions? Or Ashley, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Nope.
So wages, you're asking for a three percent COLA and a step. But if I look at twenty-five and twenty-six department requests, am I reading that wrong? Are there forty-four thousand, six...
Twenty-five, the twenty-five salary amount is only for the first six months. So double that dollar amount.
And you can see what their salaries were.
Yeah.
Budget for last year.
Okay, I was missing a section there. That was a heck of an increase.
Yeah. Fifty percent, yeah. And we, we, when I talked to Christie, we did not make, we just put the three percent COLA step in there as a request to see if the Commissioners would approve that.
That answers some questions. There wasn't three percent in there, even at Marsh Valley Math.
Yeah.
So did we decide if there was any adjustment that could be looked at on the rent? You know, we had talked about those options with, I know we, we put that in, but then they give us credit back. And we talked about another building or whatever, but we talked like there really maybe wasn't a better option. But we're still budgeting for that in there. Is that still the best option?
Yeah, we're still budgeting with that. Jason has given us some property to look at. And we don't know if we're ready to make that move. But I think it's nice to be able to say, we have this option. Look at what their, their lease is going to be. And then go to Clark and say, hey, can we have a break? Or can we see this because we've had this increase for so long? And then when we're ready to expand, we will need to either move out of that location or explore what the bailout costs would be to be able to move into another small section that's attached to Ashley.
But this particular budget is to stay status quo right now?
Yeah, until we've had that discussion. If, I feel like even if we do get a reduction, which would be great, that's our goal. But we want a plan for that. We might not get that.
And the, if Portnoy does it the way they've been doing it, they may just give us more subsidy, which we would only see on the revenue side.
Right.
But this would still stay the same, so.
Yeah, the opposite would be revenues.
Any other question?
You're fully staffed?
No.
How many councils are you short of?
I have, I have one position open right now, so. And then Maya, and then the situation with Maya will be, she would still stay on with us, so then...
Right.
So I have one, I just have one position open.
Yeah, if the contract position isn't approved, then we would have two positions.
Okay. How long has your one position been open?
Just barely.
Oh, just barely?
It was probably two weeks.
All right, because I was gonna say, I thought you were most fully staffed most of this...
Yeah, he, his last day was June sixth, I think. So he just left and he's moving to Kentucky with his family.
That's part, part of the reason for some of these requests is Ashley's actually had a full year of...
Right.
Good, normal revenue, so things are more than...
That is, that is the part, like, it would be great to have the contract employee because they're bringing in revenue. And when we have long-term openings is when we run into revenue shortages because they're, they're actually, the more they work and the more options we have, then the more revenue that they can bring in.
Right.
And that's where we get all of our budget from.
So is your priority to get the contract settled first and then proceed maybe to fill out another position?
Um, no, doing...
Semitimes.
Yeah, so we're, I'm working with Matthew right now. He's put together the contract so that we can come and discuss that before she leaves. We have until August with her until that happens. And then the position is open right now. And I actually, I think I sent an email just saying, when's my hire date? Because I wanted to be clear on when my hire date would be and we could possibly do some interviews, so.
Any other questions for...
No.
Jason?
No.
Okay, looks good.
Great, thank you. Thank you all.
Judge, or is it going to be Jason on this one?
Thank you.
Jason will take the lead on this.
You're riding shotgun?
I will, yeah.
Okay.
I will fill in this.
Now we're back to forty-two.
Forty-two. So now we're going to do this report.
On District Court Fund, our first request is a three percent COLA and the appropriate step increases for employees. That, those aren't factored into the department request. We were, as we talked with Christie, we just put that as a marker at the top. And then depending on what, is that correct?
It's built in.
It's built in, never mind. It is built in now.
I was gonna say, my math...
But I wasn't gonna correct you.
My math shows it's built in, but...
I did not build those in. They, they did all the work, so they give the credit.
Caitlin did that for you.
So great job, Caitlin, thank you. And, and so we have those built in apparently, and we're grateful for that. And then we want to move down to position number one zero four four zero one. Law clerk for Judge Gabbiola. Along with this request, there is a job classification request form included.
They may or may not have that. If you don't, we'll talk about it during the recap on Monday.
And so historically, there's two positions for a law clerk and a staff attorney. The law clerk is usually what the, is someone that hasn't passed the bar. And so they don't have a license to practice law. And the staff attorney, the individual has passed the bar. And, and they have their license to practice law. And so, and they're called attorneys at that point. For Judge Gab, we've been lucky. There is a shortage of attorneys everywhere. You guys have probably experienced that with prosecutors, with public defenders and conflict attorneys before it all went over to SPD. But we've been really lucky. We have law clerks and staff attorneys that have been here for a long period of time. Nine years, seven years and three years. Normally, they're here for a year or two until they get their license and then they move on to their career. But there is a shortage and it makes it recruitment very difficult. So our request is twofold. First, for recruitment, is to be able to move this up one grade. Normally, it's two grades below a staff attorney. We had asked that it's one grade above because they're so closely related. One of Judge Gabbiola's staff, uh, law clerk has not passed the bar. But she's been here for a long period of time. Her informal study of what other districts are doing, her, her salary is below what a lot of people start at as a law clerk. Even what the law, Judge Garb, Judge Brower's law clerk who hasn't passed the bar, hers starts out at a, at a higher raise, at a higher salary. And so we're recommending to be able to recruit and retain his law clerk is to be able to have that step increase. Where there's still a differentiation between a staff attorney by one, by one grade. I keep saying, I keep saying, but grade and step. I keep interposing both of them, but a grade increase. And so our request is for her to, for his staff attorney to be able to move up to one grade and stay at the same step she is, which is step three. And we feel that that would retain that. Retaining these staff attorneys is a huge thing because a lot of turnover that used to happen was really difficult because the judge has to be able to train them a lot of ways. They do a ton of writing and they just learn how, what the judge wants in their decisions and what they need. And so this long-term things that they just can work together as a team. And it's much more efficient for the court, for the judge. Saves the judge a lot of time, saves the court a lot of time. They can turn over decisions faster and be much more efficient for people who come to court, attorneys, and for the whole process. Judge, did you want to add anything to that?
I would add this to the historically distinction between the law clerk and staff attorney. I don't know how long it's been. But historically, even when a law clerk passed the bar and was a licensed attorney, the position was still nominated as a law clerk. Judge McDermott, I don't know how many years ago, it was quite a while ago, wanted to make the distinction between a staff attorney and a law clerk to make the position more desirable for students coming out of law school and also to make their pay commensurate with a prosecuting attorney. So that was historically why they had that distinction. Job-wise, they do the same thing. Judge Carnarole's and Judge Naps's respective staff attorneys do the exact same thing that Ms. Torres does for me, even though she's not a licensed attorney. And she's been here for seven years, going on eight years. And Jason stated it succinctly. She knows what I want, how I decide things, what I'm looking at, those sorts of things. May or may not know, as a judge in this state, I have to swear under oath every thirty days I've got something under advisement or no longer under advisement so I can get paid. So it's, it's a huge benefit for me to have somebody who's got brief banks, knows what my thinking is, can do that efficiently, that somebody who's just out of law school, I would have to train and have a learning curve in that respect. So the institutional knowledge that Ms. Torres has, it's immeasurable for me and I think practically for everybody because she provides a service to the public in what she does for me to do my job. So that's, and she's, she did some research and Jason's right. The other counties throughout the state, other districts typically pay their law clerks, somebody just out of law school, more than what she's earning at this point. And the recruitment is another issue as well. When I first took this job five years ago, I had maybe three letters from law students. In the last four years, I've had two. Last year, didn't have any. So there's really no interest. And I think part of it is the market being what it is. Law students with no experience are being offered higher salaries in the private sector, which, you know, they can do. I realize this is a public sector, but just to put that in perspective as to why we have a shortage or dearth of applicants that want to actually be a law clerk or a staff attorney for a lowly trial judge.
Okay, so B budget?
The next item is, I'll just go over where we have increases in office supplies in the B budget. We've had an increase in paper supplies. At halfway mark, we were at two thousand. So we're requesting to be able to increase that from two thousand to forty-five hundred. And then for luncheons and meals, you'll see there's a big increase. The reason for that is the jury, the water that go, the water jugs that were used were in the jury amenities. And we feel that it would be more appropriate to put it in this line item. So it's not an increase in budget, it's a shift in budget. And then we requested an increase in travel. We've taken this from jury and being able to do this for clerks to be able to attend trainings and C A O to be able to attend those trainings. And the next line item is education. And this is for I I C M and D V court training. And the next line item would be drug testing. So probation has pre-trial services agreement where they drug test people who haven't, they've come to initial court, but they haven't been able to, they get placed on pre-trial supervision. And part of their pre-trial supervision is that they have to drug test. And some of them are found indigent. And the statute says that they don't have to pay for that until they're found guilty. And so we're paying out of the drug testing dollars about five thousand a year for these indigent services. It's just getting tight enough now that we're going, until we can get into a new contract, we're going into drug testing fees to be able to pay for that. And so we felt like since this is a Bennett County misdemeanor program, that we could be able to put this in the District Court Fund to be able to cover those costs of indigent drug testing. And that's, that doesn't count anybody in a treatment court. It's only for pre-trial services.
Jason, what's the difference of the funds being in here versus in Evvy's probation budget?
It could be in the probation budget.
She has money in there.
When I asked her about that, she, I was just told that she didn't have drug testing money.
Okay, let's talk on the side about that because I'm not sure that's, let's talk on the side on that.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah, wherever it's placed, that would be great. We just have been the one that's, has the contract and has been paying it. And so that's how we've been doing it. And then, and when they're ordered to pay, when it's been ordered to pay for it, the orders have been saying the District Court Fund, but we can change that to whatever fund for Evvy.
It's easier to track with you, we'll just have you do it.
Okay. The next line item is for jury appreciation, education outreach. There's a jury appreciation week. And the former jury commissioner was able to learn a lot from some of the other districts. And during that appreciation week, they really tried to show a lot of appreciation for our jurors and stuff and to be able to increase their kind of buy-in to becoming a juror and all the great things that it brings to the court. And so there was a increase of changing two thousand dollars out of the jury fund to be able to show that appreciation. And then our last line item is the Capitol Building's courtroom. We had discussed previously a phase in courtroom remodels. Courtroom one fourteen, which would be Judge Thompson's courtroom, would be next on the list if we receive funding. And we're requesting a hundred thousand dollars for that. And then, and then we pay out of the court trust for the furniture and the stuff about forty thousand dollars. And then we're requesting also a remodel of room three oh seven, which is where I'm at, Lacy, the Deputy Child Court Administrator, our admin assistant and the staff attorneys are at. It's just very outdated. The walls were wallpapered and then they were painted over. And we've moved a cabinet and now we have an accent wall because nobody painted under it. It just looks like the original wallpaper. It's just peeling, it's peeling back. And then the carpet is the old blue carpet. When I talked to Dan, he said, he thought fifty thousand if there's asbestos and twenty, below twenty-five thousand if there's no asbestos. And so those are our recommendations.
So you did talk to Dan on your Capitol projects?
Yeah.
And just to let you know, he isn't getting anything done until he gets all these other projects that he's in the middle of.
Yeah.
He's, he's got a full dock of things going on right now. And then he has to take some vacation, so. We're at that point with him, but he's, we're gonna force him to take some time off.
Yeah, we, that's what I always notice is I, that he is, the quality of work that you get from him is amazing.
Yes, it is.
And then when I come in on Saturdays, he's here working. And he works long hours and he does such a great job. Yeah, we, we understand where we fall, even with the other courtrooms. When... Yeah, we understand where we fall, even with the other courtrooms, when projects have come up, there's been delays in those, and we totally understand and want to be supportive of his schedule and your guys' schedule and just request funding for when it would be appropriate for him to do it. And even before, we had to wait a year to do it, but just to have that request there so if the time becomes available. And we have some brief court fundings for the audio and visual portion, and they understand it might not happen and it gets pushed back.
Yeah, Dan will never say no, so I have to say no for him.
He's been pretty good about saying when we can get it in there. And then the last one I have is the clerk of the district court.
That one is on?
Nine.
Yes, nine.
And this one, also start out with our employees, it's 3% COLA and step increases, which have been factored in. And then if you look at...
Pretty small thought, too.
Expense allowance. We're requesting for 80 for the C A O position to have a cell phone reimbursement. Historically, that's been paid, and we've just not had it in this particular spot. And then we've also requested the travel for the clerks in this budget to be able to attend the I I C M training in Boise and for them to be able to travel and to do that education. And that's all I have in the clerk of the district court.
Okay, very straightforward. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I brought these down here because I ate Buddy's salad for lunch. So I was thinking of you.
You and all your friends.
Chief! Just me and me. Just me and me. Carrie went and grabbed it.
Ambulance is on page 41.
41. This is a test.
Good morning, Commissioners Ryan Hearn, Bannock County, Amherst District, and Pocatello Fire. So we're bringing a budget to you this year, and we've brought multiple staffing options, and I was hoping to kind of go over kind of the breakout of those. The base budget is a budget that includes a 3% increase to account for operational increases and wage adjustments, which include a step and a table adjustment for our pay grades. As you all know, we operate a advanced life support ambulance service for the county that consists of three ALS ambulances that are all stationed in the Pocatello area and four, up to four reserve ambulances staffed by Pocatello Fire Department personnel, and then three BLS ambulances in South County. The call distribution, I think to give you kind of a picture of how that maps out over our system, the calls in what I'll call the central Bannock zones, which would be Pocatello, accounts for about 75% of our call volume, and this is on about 8,000 calls per year. The North Bannock zones, which would be Chubbuck and North Bannock County, are about 20%, and then South Bannock County is about 5%. Some of the struggles that we're experiencing currently with the South County service is just the rural nature of the county down there and the amount of time that it gets to get advanced service providers, advanced life support, paramedics down into those areas. Additionally, we're experiencing some struggles with volunteerism. It's no secret, throughout the fire and EMS system nationally, there's a harder time recruiting and retaining volunteers. People are busy, many people are working multiple jobs, and so we're seeing increased out-of-service times with our units in South County that historically we have not experienced. And so with the McCammon Fire Station coming online, I think there's an opportunity now to look at, an opportunity to change the system a little bit, and that reflects kind of the staffing models that we've brought forward. Do you have any questions so far? Do you want me to kind of just start diving into what those staffing models look like?
I'm ready to dive in. Whatever you've got, you've got the menu.
Okay. So we've looked at a couple of options. Obviously, the ideal option would be a 24/7 ambulance down there, which would look like a paramedic-staffed ambulance out of the McCammon Station, and it would be staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to provide ALS coverage in South County. That is going to service, we feel, from that central location, it's going to be the best response, the biggest bang for the buck, if you will, to service it with a single paramedic ambulance. Rarely, less than 10% of the time do we have two calls that are concurrent in South County at the same time. We're dealing with a pretty small volume of calls down there, about 600 a year, so maybe a little less than one per day. The additional ask to staff the full-time ambulance down there would be about $370,000 above the 3% increase, which I'll call the base ask. And that would be to hire six additional people, and in that, we're using some of the money that's currently being used for the volunteer system and also some money that's been budgeted for overtime. Historically, we did a lot of ambulance transfers, transfers, excuse me, interfacility transfers down to Salt Lake or Idaho Falls, and we staffed those with overtime. Two years ago, a company came into town and is now doing that work. And it was at a time when we were really struggling to fill that need. And so while it is saving us a bit in overtime, we are seeing a little bit of a reduction in revenue. We did make some revenue on those calls. And so that's overtime that we're not expending, that we would divert to this South County staffing issue. And then also based on what staffing model, we would take a part or all of the current money that's allocated for volunteer stipends and for coordinators in South County to help with scheduling, training, stocking the ambulance equipment, maintenance, and stuff like that. We also provided kind of an in-between model, you know, if the full-time staffing is something that we feel like it's out of our reach currently, we proposed what we are calling a peak hour-only staffing, and that would look like a paramedic ambulance staffed somewhere around the 40-hour to 72, let's see, 40 to 72 hours a week during the day, which is our busiest time. About 2/3 of our call volume in South County occurs between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. And so we've come up with a rotation that I think is pretty unique, that would staff four people, two paramedics and two drivers, on alternating shifts, two shifts, where you would have coverage, somebody would either work, they could work every other day or potentially three 12s in a row, and then they would be off for four days, the second shift would pick up. That only covers daytime hours, six days a week, and then nighttime would be covered by the volunteers. They generally have a better opportunity to cover the nights because of work shifts, childcare, other factors, and then they also would probably cover on Saturday, excuse me, Sunday. So this is kind of a Monday through Saturday peak hour staffing model that we're proposing, and that would require about an additional $130,000 in expenditures. We are hopeful, I am going to be bringing a, I know we're not really getting to the revenue side now, but we are hopeful that there are some revenue that we've been talking about for a few years under the Ground Emergency Medical Transportation Program through Medicaid. We've gotten a preliminary revenue estimate and are ready to bring a contract to you for a company to do our cost recovery under that program, and we feel like that's going to add between 90 and $125,000 annually to the Amherst District budget in revenue.
So that's a third-party billing?
It would be, they would help us prepare the cost recovery packet. So we would provide, they would tell us what data they need. This company is called Public Consulting Group, P C G. They're very well-established in this space, helping municipalities and districts in this program specifically, they're operating in adjoining states. They helped stand up the program in Idaho and write the plan amendment that was submitted to CMS, and so we're hoping to use them. They do charge, it's roughly 10% of the amount recovered, and then we do get a discount for being a member of the Idaho Fire Chiefs. So it's tiered, and it looks back to F Y 23. Our first cost recovery packet will be due August of this year, and it will look back to nine months of F Y 23 and a full report for F Y 24. So we'll be looking at just shy of two fiscal years submitting this summer, and then moving forward, we'll submit every April for the previous fiscal year. So next year in April of 2026, we'll submit for F Y 25. So we'll always be submitting a year in arrears for the previous fiscal year, but after we've established kind of a trend, we'd like to, you know, look at building that into our budget annually to help cover some of these asks.
Are they like a collection agency or just helping you with billing?
They're just going to help with the reporting. So we have to submit a report. Basically, this program helps, Medicaid recognizes that they do not fully reimburse the cost of providing the service to Medicaid patients. And so there's a local match, I'll call it, and then Medicaid assumes some of that. And based on that mix, they help recover a portion of that gap. It doesn't make the district whole, but it does cover a portion of what it costs to provide service to Medicaid patients. In Bannock County, we have a fairly high Medicaid payer mix, it's about 25%. And so when you take the totality of what it costs to run our service, and that's the total amount to run the service minus what we receive in transport revenue from Medicaid, you take that difference, multiply it by a factor, and then submit. And that's what this company helps us navigate that process and all the rules.
It's kind of a recapture of write-offs that we've had.
Yeah, we're just basically, they're helping us prepare a cost recovery packet to Medicaid, and then we are paid from Medicaid.
The only way they get paid is if they recover.
Recover.
Recovery. For us, so just to make sure my brain is working properly, let's say it costs you $10 to transport, Medicaid says they'll pay five, and so then this company would come in and help you reduce that 5%.
Correct.
$5 that we have to pay.
Yeah, we would maybe recoup three of that five or something like that.
Okay.
Let's see if I have any other notes here.
So is those the only two proposals you have for?
Staffing.
Staffing, which includes the rest of the county as well. The only two you're ready to walk into right now.
Yeah, I think this would be kind of step one. I will say, right now, we are exploring the option of potentially moving one of our ambulances that's stationed in Pocatello to Chubbuck. I've talked with Chief Miller to see what that looks like, to talk about what intergovernmental agreements we would need to be able to accomplish that. In the last four years, the call volume in South County has grown about 1%. I think I have those numbers somewhere down here. Or, excuse me, the numbers in South County from 2020 to 2024 grew about 10% increase in call volume, and system-wide, we're seeing an overall increase. But the largest increase is the call volume in Chubbuck. That number over the last four years is up 37% versus the number in what I'll call Central County, which is Mint Creek area and City of Pocatello, that's 15%. So we're really seeing a large increase in call volume in Chubbuck and in North Pocatello, in that northwest corner, and that's due to an influx of assisted living facilities and skilled nursing facilities in that area.
I was going to say, that's, isn't that where you live?
Oh, yeah, I'm one of them.
And so...
Signs are going off all the time, and I can hear them when they shut off.
Yeah.
I mean, I know exactly where you're going.
It really makes sense, you know, right now, we're talking a lot today about South County, but it really makes sense to look at how we are going to push service to the north faster, to get faster response times there without adding a lot to the budget currently. But I believe in a few years, maybe three to five, we might be looking at an additional ambulance to bring on to cover that call volume in the center of the county, maybe even backfilling whichever one we were potentially to move to Chubbuck or putting one in Chubbuck. But I think the time is now to start talking about that solution.
Do you think that Chubbuck could possibly happen in this next fiscal year, or are we that close, you think?
Well, I think if we move a current ambulance, then really it's going to be for pretty minimal cost. So I'm hopeful that we can accomplish both, an expansion into South County and addressing that call volume in Chubbuck as well.
I'd push for both of them, just because of that call volume and the distance, coming down that busy road, if we could work with Chubbuck, you know, if all we need is an agreement and some, because staffing may not change much, but...
Yeah.
Is the big pushing point with Chubbuck, who mads the ambulance?
I don't think so. I've had good conversations with Chief Miller about potentially our people staffing the ambulance in his station. He's also open to the idea of a mixed staffing model where he potentially contributes to staffing much the same way that Pocatello does with our current staffing. You know, if we have a few people on vacation or sick leave, we kind of cover those with Pocatello employees, and Chief Miller is willing to do the same thing with Chubbuck to accomplish this. So I'm pretty optimistic that we're going to be able to find a way.
The only fly in the ointment, and of course, I have somebody that's jabbering in my ear all the time, is do we have a conflict between two different unions? I mean, you've got the Pocatello Union of the firefighters, and of course, you've got Chubbuck Esz, can you see anything that would conflict an agreement or sharing or whatever? The only reason I bring that up is because I have a chirp in my ear saying that could be a problem.
I guess until we sit down and have that conversation, we don't know. Chief Miller and I met last week, and we talked about this very issue, and he was going to go talk to his union, and I was going to talk to mine and just kind of say, hey, let's all sit down, or maybe even just the two unions need to sit down, because from my perspective, I'm not seeing a large pinch point, and I think Chief Miller would agree. But that doesn't mean that we are all seeing and that we're not seeing something that might be there. So we're hoping to have that conversation with everybody and to make sure that we're addressing any potential issues.
My question would be on the South County. If that took place, would there be any cost reductions versus, because if you already have a unit there, you're not paying fuel from, at least from Pocatello out there. Is there any cost reductions, and there should be some revenue expansions if you're right there and you're only sending one unit out and the growth down there? It'd be interesting to see the difference between the revenue and the expenditures and see if that would help offset some of that additional staffing cost.
Yeah.
I don't know if you've explored that at all.
That's a good point, and there would be some operational costs that you mentioned, such as fuel. We looked at that, and we really didn't see a reduction in medical supplies or anything because we're still going to be servicing the same volume of calls, and the revenue also shouldn't change because by putting an ambulance in McCammon, we're basically addressing the same call volume with a different unit. What it does do, to your point, maybe from a little bit different perspective, is it reduces the amount of time we're sending a unit from Central County, Pocatello, south, which takes pressure off of this system, which is a very busy system dealing with, you know, between Chubbuck and Pocatello, 95% of the call volume. And so I think it's a bit of a... And so I think it's a bit of a stopgap to help us with that call volume in in North County, if you will, before we need to look at a potential fifth ambulance.
And don't you get some cost savings by not utilizing the the volunteers as much that way?
A bit, and that is figured into some of these cost scenarios. We've taken that money and rolled it into full-time staffing.
Well, I think part of it is you can't put a dollar on the service and the better service and quality. I mean,
Well, and time.
We appreciate all our volunteers. They're great. But if you have your EMTs on there and stuff all the time, that's that's their full-time job.
Correct.
It's just, you can't put a dollar on that.
Yeah, and I, and the other side of that is, because of the distance out there, the way the system is right now, I can tell you, there's few people that just say, I'm not waiting for the ambulance. We're loading them up and going. That may not be a good decision, but you can't fault people for doing that. If we had, if we had one right there, you may have more call volume, and they will, they would pick up and transport more rather than run out there and go, no, we already took ours. And so you've got an ambulance en route, you got to turn them around. So I think that may be a factor. If you had one there, you may have a better ridership. That's a terrible word to use on that, but people might use it more. Because they say, for instance, your your brother-in-law, he didn't wait for an ambulance, his wife hauled him in there.
Yeah.
Um, I think you may have, if you had a presence there with with a staff there, I think you may have a higher volume of calls that actually will return them back in there. I don't know how you would, I don't know how you'd measure that, but I think that intangible was definitely there.
Yeah, I agree.
I have a question. On the the peak hour staffing, why did you stop on Saturday? Why did you not run that through Sunday, especially during the summer?
Just because we were having a hard time with keeping it at only two shifts and not adding that third shift with with the hours.
Couldn't you move it like Tuesday through Sunday?
Oh, we absolutely could. And we would look at the peak, the peak demand. And and I apologize, I didn't bring that chart with me. But I think we did look, and and Sunday actually is one of the slower days down there. As far as
Even on Sunday?
That's because all the
They're running a stop sign over.
Yeah, that's a different story. Yeah, that's a different story.
But we would look to strategically make sure that if we did only have peak hour staffing, that we were maximizing both the time a day and the days a week to get the most coverage.
Yeah, I just thought Saturday and Sunday was a big day down south. But if your statistics tell otherwise, then, okay.
Sure. Cool. Okay.
And then I also, we have a capital request as well, if you're ready to look at that.
Yep.
So currently, we have an ambulance on order, and we are not anticipating delivery of that until very much at the end of this fiscal year, but probably the way these things work pushed into FY twenty-six. And so the first item, the ambulance, the one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-six, this is the offset from what the Idaho EMS grant paid. And we would ask to roll that into FY twenty-six from FY twenty-five. So that is not additional money. We also currently have a grant out with Idaho EMS for an auto load system. Those run just shy of seventy thousand dollars, Idaho EMS. If we're successful with the grant, we'll pay up to forty thousand. So anticipating any potential cost increases if this does get pushed into FY twenty-six, we've asked for thirty-five thousand dollars there. We're asking for a command vehicle. And this is a vehicle that I came to you in in twenty twenty-two and asked for, and it was actually approved. But this was during a time when vehicle ordering was very crazy post-COVID. And we explored a a lease option and 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 a purchase versus a purchase option, and we missed a window, and so we actually never executed that vehicle in twenty twenty-two. It would be replacing a two thousand and three Chevy Avalanche that has been well-used. And so we submitted a request for that. We have several cardiac monitors that are more than ten years old and are no longer supported under the care plan that we have. We have to contract with Zoll for them to maintain those monitors separately. So replacing three monitors and an additional monitor for the ambulance that we're expecting to potentially go in McCammon, that would be four monitors at two hundred and forty thousand, an additional Lucas device for that ambulance, and then also two more auto load kits to keep up with our ongoing maintenance. Should have brought better glasses, which brings a total capital ask to six hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Questions?
We'll look.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Again? Are you back?
I keep asking for me.
What page are you in? Twenty-six. Go ahead, state your name, and the floor is yours.
Heather Studley, Manager of GIS Department. Kind of a little bit all over the place in this, but let's start guessing top and go on our way down. For staffing, please, I'm just looking at basically a basic step increase. I was not smart enough to ask if the numbers you guys gave me back included a COLA or not, if it was just the step.
I think it was just the step.
Okay. I think I got out of the habit of asking for a COLA because that is your decision, not anything on my end. So if it's going to happen, it's going to happen. So that is a a step increase for for everybody on staff. Just, they do good work, and I'd like to like to show appreciation how I can on that one. As far as staffing request goes, everything else is most of my budget doesn't have a whole lot of changes per se from this year. I've got a couple of areas that do have some increases. The biggest ones are in education and travel. Travel in general is just more expensive. That is just a thing, that is a reality, what we are right now. I do have a couple of exceptional cases that are covered in these. Overarching between travel and education budgets, my goal is to be able to send one person on my team to a conference once a year. That is the goal. I have a couple of extra asks in here. I myself would like to be able to go to what is called a GIS Leadership Academy. It is a program, a week-long kind of cohort program, put together specifically for people in GIS who are in or upcoming to leadership positions. They cover things such as team management, project management, ORLIs, and all that kind of fun stuff that we like the people in charge to know how to do. That would be a one-time for this next year. It would not be a repeating every year request after that. What else I may have that is unusual in that one? The other one we have next year that is semi-reoccurring, this is a conference that occurs every other year. It is a local conference in twenty-six, it actually will be held here in Pocatello. I do like to try to send my entire team to those. They are expected to participate in these. My general rule is you get one conference for free. After that, you have to do something, either present, volunteer, whatever the case may be. These little local conferences are great for, I think I'm the only person on my team who has gone to a conference and presented or done anything. These little ones are great practice to get you familiar with how conferences work and things like that. So I would like to send my entire team to that. The only thing we're looking at is registration costs. I am doing a rough guesstimate of about three hundred dollars a person. We haven't set a fee set for that yet, so I'm not sure exactly what it's going to be. But but we don't have to worry about hotel, travel, anything like that for that particular conference. Otherwise, I think the only capital request I'm looking at this year is our big plotter is starting to have regular and reoccurring software issues. We have had it looked at by maintenance teams. There's nothing else they can do. They've tried running updates. It just, it just doesn't want to turn on some mornings. We have to do hard resets, probably two or three times a week on it now, to get it to keep running. It hasn't started to affect print quality yet, but it wouldn't surprise me if that starts to become an issue in the nearer future than not. The initial one was purchased back in twenty nineteen, if I remember correctly. So we've had it for a minute. But it's also one that I do not consider mission critical. At this point in time, we have to push that off for another year or so. We can probably make it work. At this point in time, I wasn't sure if you guys had any questions on anything.
I don't see the Esri software in here.
Esri software's been covered by Adam.
Okay.
So that's under his line items. We are looking at fifty-seven thousand a year. I did not print that number off, so I don't have it with me right at the moment.
Does that still include trainings for you?
It includes all free online trainings, which we take advantage of regularly. If I want to do anything extra, any kind of like instructor-led sort of thing, there is an extra cost. And I did include an item kind of under that category of or under education of about two thousand dollars to help cover an instructor-led course if we need to. So, which we probably will get at least one of those in this next year, so.
Kristi, do you know if that Esri's any software support line?
It should be in four twenty-eight twenty.
Okay, software support.
Yeah.
It was nice you happened to look up that number, not having it memorized.
Kristi's memory, you never cease to amaze me on how well you can just pull this stuff up. It's amazing.
A few years of practice.
Just a little bit.
I'm not always right.
Okay, any questions for the other?
I was asked to make a mention of possibly revamping our fee schedule. I don't have a hard, like, presentation to give on that. The biggest adjustment I would be looking at making is when we do print maps in general, but specifically when we custom build maps for people, which we do a couple of a year. The current fee schedule only reflects the printing cost on that and not the work that goes into that. And that would be my recommended adjustments would be to include, if I could do it, probably an hourly rate for creating custom maps for people outside of Bennett County.
That seems appropriate, an hourly rate for something like that. I can't make money on it.
No, we can't. I'm just trying to think if you could do, maybe you add a category and put custom map. How long do they usually take? I mean, I know it probably varies, but
It is, it does vary. The absolute, I have never put together a custom map in less than forty-five minutes.
Oh.
Ever.
You just did, maybe you add a category for custom map, and then you just put one hour. So somehow we could add a, and we'd have to look at statute and see how we could do it. But you could put like one hour minimum or two hour minimum. And then if additional hours, then you could add an additional
Sixteen thousand for the plotter.
And talk on that, and we'll see how we can make that work.
Yeah, so that was, yeah, just something I wanted, I was asked to bring that up as a
I think we want to keep it simple when we're doing fees, because if you do an hourly rate, are you going to clarify who's hourly, what year, that kind of stuff? So if we could just kind of build it in. And again, I keep looking at him because like with
Like, see, his wheels are turning.
Fees and fees and stuff, I think it's just easier if we just do one month and then maybe do an add if additional hours are necessary somehow. But we'll work, we can work through that.
I think that's more of a question for prosecuting attorneys on what we can charge.
And how we could, how we could do it with that.
And I wasn't sure, so I thought I'd go ahead and bring it up and see, see what the options are on that one. As far as like the fee for the plotter, unless I start charging departments for prints, we will never make money back on that. That's just what it is. Easily ninety percent of the work we do is for other departments in the county. So that's not, that's just what that is, so.
In county and out of county, it's a big difference.
Yeah. If I wanted to be mean about it, I'd be throwing fees at Dan. But when he brings me fifty-page building plans, those are fun.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions? But but the building plans, if it's people are getting building permits, that should be built into the
No, it's for us.
Yeah, because if it's for us,
Yeah, yeah.
we're just going to have to eat it.
When Dan has to do to markups on building plans for facilities, those can be some quite horrendous print jobs.
Good.
All right.
That's good, thank you.
Any nails? All right.
That should be it.
Thank you.
Can I get a little line item for GIS on my budget right now? That's going to be a whole set.
If it's a
I know, I'm having an issue, I'll email it later this afternoon.
Julie.
Right.
So you should be
Hello. Page one.
Page one. Whoa, page one.
What? Yeah, the important office.
Your number one.
I don't think I've ever been called that.
All right. Carrie, are you in charge of this, or Julie in charge of this? Or who's?
Typically, we each do our own, so you tell me who you want to start with.
Well, Julie should be easy, so let's start there and then you go.
I'm probably
Well, then, let's go with Carrie. Number one. Number one. Okay, you two, paper, rock, scissors, never loses goals.
Let's, let's have a thumb war.
Yeah.
You, you, okay.
Just introduce yourself.
Julie Hancock, Bennett County Elections Administrator. Talk about the budget. Do I have to say why we're here? So just before we start looking at the lines, you'll see that this one's a little bit bigger than the one we did last year. We budgeted for two elections last year. We're budgeting for three this year in the event of a mayoral runoff. So some of the numbers I've adjusted a little bit, I've taken some down and some up. The cities, Pocatello is one of the last cities in Idaho to have a runoff on their books. And they'll, they'll reimburse us for that cost. And so I build a budget for them when they're doing their budget stuff. We had a runoff in twenty twenty-two. It was fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty, so
I think the way things are looking, that is a smart idea.
It's a very likely possibility this time around. It's about to get pretty interesting, sounds like. So the other part of about doing this budget is I never really know what to expect. Like, we could have had, you know, a ten thousand dollar election in May, but instead we had a fifty-some thousand. So it's really difficult to build, especially in an odd year, because I don't know what's going to happen. So a lot of it is kind of guesswork. But we've, we also rolled back fifty, forty, fifty this year, I'm not sure how
Whatever's not spent just rolls. And we just try again. Like she said, you just never know.
Yeah, we try to be fiscally responsible and not pack your budget. But then what if something happens, like an emergency election comes up because of Mother Nature or something? And then we don't have the funds, so, I don't know. That was a, that was my disclaimer. Okay, are we just going on from the first one? Office supplies? That one stayed the same?
Hang on, real quick. So for the board, if you want to go to page two, elections has, the line item is going to start with one-one-oh, one-oh-one, eleven. So we have divisions within this department because you essentially have three departments. So Division eleven is all of Julie's lines, so if you can see where those are.
Division eleven.
Yeah.
Clear on the left side, gotcha.
Yeah, sorry, I should have clarified that part, too.
Just hit the highlights, Julie, if there's anything that really took a jump up.
Okay. Nope, just that we'll see some increase and decrease. A lot of the increases and decreases were based on some line items that went into the negative last year or in this current fiscal year for whatever unexpected came up. We're not going to go with the negative bottom line, but some line items. So I adjusted those appropriate to kind of what we spent last year. Might spend less this year. My licensing and maintenance on the elections equipment, express vote and scanners, I switched that around a little bit because we bought four additional or six additional, with half a grant funds. bit because we bought four additional, or six additional, with half a grant funds, express votes, and so they get billed at a different time, and so I switched those around. But otherwise, there's about fifty thousand more in this one than there was in last year's. That's about the only highlight.
And that's another election.
That's a third election, yeah.
So you dropped your notices down.
My what?
Your note, your legal notices. You reduced that a couple thousand, but with the potential of extra elections, is there more notifications?
Well, I, there was a lot left in there right now, because right now I just did one. Let me see where my legal notices are here. So I still have money in, oh, I'm rocking on the wrong page. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I know we want to get quick here. Yeah, I still have seven thousand in that account in these two elections, and so, and there'll be about a thousand coming out of that for May's election, out of that seven. So I thought, gosh, I think I over-budgeted that last time.
Okay. And then on the ballots, you've only increased that twenty thousand if there's a runoff. Does that, does that include that runoff?
Yeah, that'll be enough. We are doing a lot of the absentee ballots. We're printing in-house now, so it's costing us a lot less. The ballot printing cost for the last runoff was fourteen-five, fourteen thousand five, so that additional twenty should cover us.
Okay. And we had a presidential last year, which is just more balance.
Right.
Yeah.
And Proposition One. I mean, it was, it was a perfect storm for volume.
Yeah, it was. It was fun.
I got news for you, it was not fun. The last question that I had is, you cut your hotspots for elections in...
Yeah, we're, we are going through Adam now. We, we pay a portion of it, so Adam codes his invoice and then brings it to me, and then I'll code our portion. But there's some, it's a, it's a special deal with FirstNet. Adam could tell you, explain way more about it, but when they're off, we were paying five dollars a unit, and now when they're off, and we're only having two elections, so they'll only be on two days. Well, aside from training and us working with them, but from, it went from five dollars to a dollar and a half, I think, per unit when they're off. So that was a pretty good savings there.
Cool.
Okay. I don't remember what the reasoning for that is, though.
It was something to do with, was it if we get them through Adam, he can bill it through emergency services or something like that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think it had to do with the nine...
Or critical equipment, some, something to that effect. But Adam knew exactly the steps to take, and we went from that five dollars apiece. And then, I can't remember what it is. Is it fifty dollars a day if it's on?
Yeah, it'll be, it's roughly about a thousand dollars that day. So how many ever that is times fifty-seven precincts divided by, so...
And we have one for every, for every pulling location.
Yeah, we just recently got ten more additional backups. Adam, Adam hasn't had any trouble with these except for one, and when it goes down, it's just, it's down. And so we needed to have a few extra to run out to precincts in the event that one of them goes down. And then, and then I've opened that up to Adam also. If he has a catastrophic outage somewhere and we're not using him, he's more than welcome to take, they're all got the inventory stickers on them and stuff, so we would know which one are ours, but he's welcome to borrow those, too, so, because we have so many. Was that okay? I didn't ask.
We don't share.
I was gonna say, yeah, you just said that on the record. You'll be getting a call later today. She's turned red.
Make sure she doesn't have a stapler.
Hey, no.
She'll throw it.
Any questions for Julie? It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, thank you. This one's gonna be a fun one, too.
Yeah.
Can't wait.
Yeah, good times.
I'm actually being serious about that. Am I done? Would you like me to stay for moral support?
Thanks, Julie.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay. Carrie Povey, Chief Deputy Clerk. I'm here for the recorder budget. We have a couple of things in the budget that I am leaving in the budget, but I'm anticipating getting those finished up and crossing my fingers that it's going to get done this year, so we might be able to reduce that. Our, and software support is the first one. I increased that. We are looking at adding Tyler payments. It's a credit card payment that works directly with our Eagle recording system. The automated merchant systems that we signed a contract with when we first went live with this new program is no longer supported by Tyler Technologies, and so we've seen some issues with the connection and some of the receipting and the money and all of that. It's created a little bit of a nightmare for us over the last little bit. They will continue to support us because they are the ones that referred us to AMS, because they did support them at the time that we switched. However, it's, we're getting into, they're pointing fingers at each other when they can't figure out who the problem is with when they're having connectivity issues. The other thing about the Tyler payments is the girls in auditing who do liquor licensing have inquired about using credit card payments. If we do the Tyler payments, that will be an option for them to be able to take credit cards for the liquor licenses, which they haven't been able to do at this time as well. So that quote covers not only the recorder's office as well as auditors as well. The fraud alert system that I've gotten comments there, we did budget for that last year. I've been working on trying to get that resolved. We actually are doing an upgrade today after we close a business, and fingers crossed that we're going to get training on it, and it's going to be implemented before next budget year. But I haven't had a whole lot of luck with my other project, so I want to put it in the budget just to make sure that we can follow through with that if it doesn't get completed by October. That's the system where the public can go in and subscribe to be able to get notifications if anything is recorded under their name, and it's free of charge. I think the recurring fee is, once we get it initially set up, the recurring software fee is five hundred and forty dollars annually, so that's a free charge to them. And I think that'll be great because everybody's worried about, you know, you need fraud and people taking their property. So, like I said, I'm hoping that that will come down because I'm crossing my fingers that we're going to get it done before October.
Just curious, how many questions do you get on that?
On fraud?
Yeah.
I probably get on my cell phone four or five a month. Just people calling me, asking me. I had one guy call me about, oh, a month ago, and was on the phone with him, because he wouldn't talk to any of the deputy clerks about it, and he's a guy that I've known my whole life, and he is really hung up on it. And there actually was a, a fraud title attempt that happened in a county near us, and they, they have this same program, and it alerted him, and it doesn't stop it necessarily, but it alerts them immediately so that then it's easier to get it.
To fix.
Yeah, take it back, yeah.
I think a lot of people, especially with technology and everything going electronic and online and notaries and, you know, anybody can create a PDF, and, I mean, I just think it's created a ton of concern.
Yeah.
And, and we can, we can try to ensure the best that we can, but this system, another county has it.
There's, in fact, just as the clerks and commissioners conference. So I found out about this. Ada County implemented it a couple of years ago.
Wow.
And then we put it in the budget, and it was approved last year, and Carrie's working on the project. There are several other counties that hopped on it just a little bit quicker than we did and have already implemented it. Up in clerks and commissioners, I think that it is pretty universally going to be adopted this year, and there are probably four or five counties this last year that have done it.
I just hear ads for it on the radio, and I, when we get this installed, I'd like to work with them and blast that out.
Oh, absolutely.
Because that's a, that's a very valid concern now.
And it is, yeah, it is something that's free to the public, but they have to go in and sign up for it. So I was having the same thought.
Well, and it's the same issue with liens. You know, we have, sometimes we have a contractor that comes and files a lien on somebody's property, and they're like, they didn't do the job, or they're in a dispute, or whatever, and they don't find out about it until they go to refinance or something. And so if they can sign up for this, I think I'll just give them peace of mind.
Yeah, no, I think that's fantastic, so.
It's pretty inexpensive, too. Initial, a little bit of initial cost, I mean, five hundred dollars, but then five hundred dollars a year.
Worth it for the public's peace of mind.
Yep. Fuel, I increased a little bit just off of the fuel that we've spent so far this year with the traveling. That was a line item that we didn't have previously. I think we added it at one point. We just put it in travel, but I did increase that to a thousand just to make sure we didn't go into the negative there. Down to property acquisitions. I kept everything else the same, up above property acquisitions. I put in the budget for another plot filing cabinet with the accessories. We've been working with Heather at GIS because they store all of our survey maps out there, and then we have plots here. Between her and I, we've talked about trying to maybe get one at least every year, every other year, so that we can try to keep on top of having all those stored appropriately. I ordered, I did get approval for one last year. We ended up giving it to Heather because there was some miscommunication. She thought we were getting her one, and so this year I'd like to get one for ourselves, for our plots that are just stacked in the vault.
Because really, they are, I'm the custodian of those, but she holds them. So we bought one. Instead of putting it in the vault here, we just put it out there.
So I am requesting for another one for our, our office, or Heather's, either one, until we get our plots completely sorted. Everything else down through the repair and maintenance office equipment is the same. I did increase that budget just a little bit by five hundred dollars. Our microfilm scanner service agreement, they've increased it. We used to be able to do a three-year contract. They, the company was bought out. Now they allow annual, and of course, it's a little bit more money, so I wanted to make sure we had enough in there to cover that. Our postage, I increased that just a little bit, just off of the money that we've spent so far this year. That's going to go into my fee schedule question, but I did increase that a little bit. And then the education for clerk and recording, I add an additional two hundred dollars. We're going to try to sign up for Pria, and I have to sign up each employee, so I would like not only myself, but I'm thinking Courtney in my office, that's the lead recorder, to sign up for that training as well. That's been something that has been referred to us from Cassia County mainly, but I think a bunch of other counties are members as well. Other than that, I think my only other thing is on the fee schedule, and I'm not sure how this works, but Kristi told me to mention it. We had talked a little bit about, we are getting a lot of requests for marriage license and certified marriage licenses to be mailed out. It's a requirement for the STAR card, and a lot of people have moved, and so I would like to add in the fee schedule a fee to cover the cost of the envelopes and the postage when we're mailing those requests out. Typically, if they're here, they just come into the office and we can give it to them, but if they're mailing it, you know, to cover the cost of the envelope and the stamp, I'd like to add a fee for that.
What are we charging for that now?
We don't charge. We just do it.
Oh, oh, yeah.
So, yeah, we charge the copy fee, which is a dollar, and then a dollar to certify, so two dollars. But we don't charge any additional for mailing, so the stamps, what, seventy, seventy-two cents now or something, and then we have our envelopes, which are expensive through Lethal to have our fancy seal on it, so. I figured if we could do a flat rate, that way we didn't have to keep changing it annually. If we just did a dollar to cover the envelope and the stamp, keep it simple, or if we needed to actually come up with the exact price for what the envelope costs and the stamp, then we'd have to change that depending on when the envelope, the stamp increases.
That's a very interesting question, because when you apply for, when you have to get a copy of a birth certificate, it's like thirty-five bucks.
Right. And they can get a marriage license through Vada Records as well, but it's like twenty-six dollars, I think. And it takes how long to get it, and so, and most people can just come and get it, but we do have quite a few requests that are out of state that are needing it.
So we might just need to have a meeting with legal on fees.
It would be a flat fee for that, yeah.
And it's a, what, a few, few per month probably, right?
Yeah, it just depends. It kind of fluctuates. We have, we had one guy that he wanted, he needed a divorce decree and a marriage license. We were working with courts, and courts actually has it in statute that they can charge for the fee, so we just kind of jumped in with them because they, he wanted it, he wanted it priority, and then he was in Brazil, and so we had a runaround going back and forth to the post office. I think it ended up costing like, I don't know, fifteen dollars or something, which the courts then turned around and was able to charge him for that, but had that been the case for us...
I, I ended up running that, and it was actually, it was, it was almost forty dollars.
Like, at one point, like, we stamped it, and then they'd kick it back, and then we'd stamp it a different way, how they told us, and kick it back. And, yeah, so it was a FASCO, but the courts ended up getting the money back from the guy. They were able to charge it on the court side of things, but had that been us, that would have been forty dollars out the window, so.
Yeah.
Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay.
And I'm hoping, like I said, I'm hoping to reduce, I'm hoping to reduce that because I'm hoping to do fraud notify. Oh, I skipped over that one, too. I can explain that one, too. The document archiving and storage line, I kept that the same. I didn't increase it, but we had increased that last year because we're trying to upload our microphone images. I'm currently in the middle of that project, too. Fingers crossed that I'm going to get it done this year. I don't know if that's going to happen. We're having issues with their, their download and then trying to upload it in and how they've entered their data, so I'm struggling with that right now. So I don't know if I'm going to get that done by October, but I'm trying, so that could possibly go down as well in that line.
Okay. Okay. Any questions? How are you getting along with the clerk?
That clerk?
Do you see situations where you want to meet that clerk?
Yeah. And like, which clerk? Couple hours ago, I was great. Twenty minutes ago, I wanted to cry.
Thank you.
Mike, Kristi, you going through yours?
Oh, I didn't mention employees either.
At one time.
Yeah. You'll do my, do my employees first.
That's what I do.
I overskipped that one.
That's, I had her leave it like that, just so we do a one big discussion.
That's, I was trying to wonder about that this morning, so. Okay, can you just do that? Yeah, auditing, you can go ahead.
Auditing. We didn't do, salary-wise, we didn't do any adjustments because through the compensation committee, the goal was going to be steps. But if the commission decides to address any other positions that are going to be potentially under market by twenty percent or so, we would love to have, there's a handful of those positions in the clerk's office that we would love to have addressed. There's also some court positions that are twenty-plus percent under market that if we're going to address great adjustments, please keep that in mind. We have for the operating budget, we really didn't make any changes. We still have money in there for legal publications. Our office is responsible for the budget and for financials that we have to publish every year. Cell phones, we're probably going to be able to take that down because there's a reduction in what Verizon's charging, but we'll do that county-wide through the clerk's recommendation. If you turn, oh, maintenance on the postage machine, that's currently a four thousand dollars, and we're going to keep it at that. Bless you. We are about due for a new machine, but we'll monitor that through the process and see if that's something that we need to talk about. On the next page, if you look at that division code, we're number twelve for auditing. We pretty much kept everything the same. We haven't bought financial dividers and covers lately, but I think we're about to probably this year. We've used a stockpile. It's only two hundred dollars. Repair and maintenance office equipment, we took copies up, three thousand, just simply because of budget-wise last year, it looked like we needed a little bit more, so we increased that a little bit. A note within travel and education, that includes some grants, grant training, and then also with Tyler, we can buy what's called a PACE program. That gives us four to six days of education that we use for our office, HR, and it also includes three people to go to Tyler training. This year, I didn't go. Adam went in my place. Loved it. I think the more exposure he got to see from the backside, he got to see a lot of options and, and things that we aren't utilizing to its fullest yet. We're still trying to work out some of the bugs. But next year, that conference is in Vegas. We are thinking we're going to be able to potentially send three from our office, Adam again, just since it's so close, and possibly Matthew. There's been discussion about if Carrie may or may not go. She's got to look and see how much Eagle Recording is on there, but we figured we could take a county vehicle and drive, and that's going to be savings of a thousand dollars per person for flights where we've had to fly before, so.
Well, any winning on slots or the tables comes to the county, so.
You gotta gamble first. I don't gamble. If I do, I'm cheap. Let's see.
We'll get you a roll of nickels to take.
It's usually pennies, but I'll give you. Gatsby training, I do that. I break that out separate just because of all the new implementations of changes that we've got. We probably have three or four pronouncements coming up that we're gonna have to add to over the next couple of years. There's about one a year. So that's extremely vital training to do. And then thirteen hundred to submit our budget book and financials to GFOA. Last year, there's savings because the last two years I haven't done the budget book, just simply because the priority's been financials, and financials haven't been done until September or July, so we haven't had time to do the budget book. So that's along the wayside, but we are hoping to submit that this year. And that'll be next year's budget. That's it.
Outside audits.
Tell me about audits.
There's a reason we haven't had the budget book done.
Yeah.
Well, that's, I mean, we need to plan for, in my opinion, we need to really look at getting some bids from some local auditors.
We'll have probably another discussion after budget about that. Right now, I was optimistic that we'd be able to finish financials by the end of May. Now it's the end of June.
But do you have it in the budget for the audit? How much?
That's in the county operations. That, the audit is under the commission's purview, not ours. So that could be talked about during that, that one. I'm hoping maybe within the first couple of weeks of July, we'll have the financials done unless I pull some magic out this weekend. So, but they still need to review it. Even if I get it finished, they still need to review it and confirm numbers, and I don't know that they could get that done in a week.
There'd be an asterisk by it as we're going through this budget.
Don't, any questions on our?
Nope. Pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
And Chantel?
As she pops her head up over the computer.
Twenty-four is in the junk.
I think mine is super simple. I didn't change anything. The only thing is I moved in, of course, in the administration, I moved two hundred dollars from education over to contract labor. Contract labor sends our statements out for us, and so the increase in postage for that, I accounted for two hundred dollars for that to ensure that all of our statements do go out for the increase in the postage for that. As far as our direct assistance, one of the things that I did want to bring to the commission's attention is that for our cremations, the review and the amount that we pay for cremations has not been reviewed since 2012. That's a really long time. We paid twelve hundred dollars for cremation, and so I'm not sure if that's something that we want to look at for the amount that we do cremation.
So I called, I called a couple of friends of mine that are coroner, not coroners, funeral homeowners, and what they get from their counties, and it's a range up to about eighteen hundred dollars. We're paying twelve hundred dollars. And Chantel and I were thinking that somewhere in the ballpark of around fifteen hundred dollars for our area is probably, we're, at twelve hundred dollars, we're about the lowest. I don't, I couldn't find anyone that pays less than that. There are a few counties that still pay twelve hundred dollars in the area, but most are fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred dollars. And for the most part, the funeral homes are really great to work with, and so giving them a fair fee for the service that they're providing for those families and for us is something that we ought to look at, I think.
We currently have not used all fifty thousand dollars for the last couple of years.
So tell them your numbers of where we're at.
So this time last year, we were at twenty-nine cremations. Right now, we're at thirty-nine cremations for the year. In total last year, I had forty-three cremations. So we are at more cremations than we were last year, and we will probably see what we had last year. So I'm anticipating that we probably will hit budget.
So it's a budget and fee issue in combination that we need to work with the commission about?
So what number are you anticipating to hit this year?
I do not know, just simply because there's no way for me to know how many cremation applications.
Right, but you said, what are you?
Trending right now.
Because right now, we're at thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, we're not quite, we're a little over halfway.
But had a total of forty-three last year.
Yeah.
Right, so you're anticipating roughly fifty-ish?
Probably.
Is that kind of what I heard you say?
Yeah.
How many were you at last year at this time?
Twenty-nine.
Okay, so ten more at this same time.
Yeah, in total, we had forty-three total last year.
And we budgeted fifty thousand dollars for it. So if you go to fifteen...
I don't see that number ever going down. You have more and more people that are unattached, that are probably gonna qualify.
Are not preparing.
No, there's so many people that have no resources at all. Families aren't claiming responsibilities.
Thirty-one, two.
I'm not sure you're, not gonna go up that number, especially if you go to fifteen hundred. If you went fifty times fifteen hundred, it's...
Do fifteen hundred instead.
Seventy-five thousand. Yeah, seventy-five thousand. It's gonna be a twenty-five K bump. But if you're gonna, it's gonna be increase of numbers and increase of the cost. I think you're probably gonna have to go with seventy-five.
Yeah, so if it's at fifteen hundred, what is it, Christie?
If we did fifteen hundred at sixty, that's ninety thousand.
But if you go at fifty, it's seventy-five. But that may not be enough. And you have no idea what the, what the number's gonna be. I mean, it could be trending back down next time, but I don't know.
I just gauged if she was at twenty-nine and went to forty-three, we're at thirty-nine, even if you only added ten, which is, that's just, to me, sixty's conservative.
What's the trend? Is it, you know, ten to fifteen a year, five a year over the last two or three years?
It has been typically ten.
Every year.
And you were saying sixty, Christie's, is that what you just said?
Yeah, and if I take twenty-nine, well, if I take forty-three into twenty-nine, and then take that number times, to get a percentage ratio, take that times thirty-nine, it's fifty-eight.
So sixty's probably the better way to look at that, then.
Well, that's about due.
Yeah. So put it at ninety.
And if we don't use it, we...
Preliminary, see where we're at, and we'll talk about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. We gotta, we gotta do that.
And do you think that we should plan for the fifteen hundred also, along with that, all of it together?
Yeah, yeah. The total, fifteen hundred per, that's just fair, for ninety thousand dollars, so.
Now, this isn't really part of what Chantel would ask for, but on the donation meetings, as I watched those, there were a couple people that asked for some additional monies.
Ain't happening.
Okay. Okay. Just wanted to bring that up.
Day of the ask.
Okay. I give my diligence.
Sometimes you just gotta ask. Okay. Anything else, Chantel?
No, those are the only things that I wanted to bring to your attention.
Okay. We're waiting for the trailer?
Yeah, she'll probably be here in five.